Are facing, okay, okay, turn to you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first off, we've got, um, we've got minutes from our October and our November meetings. Annalise and I have, have been working on these and I can, I can, I don't know that you've had a chance to review them. I can tell you they're in pretty tip-top shape, um, with maybe a couple of exceptions. Annalise?
Yes, ma'am.
The October minutes, was there anything that, that got left out or is this all of the original notes?
Mm-hmm. I think this is pretty much. I think this is pretty much everything except for where you and I wanted to tweak it when it came to the Mount Airy Inn sign for the circle sign.
Okay.
That was up on the, that was the only one we had.
Okay. Alright, so there might be an additional sentence or two referencing those.
Mm-hmm.
The oval sign, the round sign from Mount Airy Inn?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, well could we then entertain a motion to?
There's just, there's just one typo on, on number three, page one, weather.
Okay.
An approval of amendments.
Page three of ten twenty-eight?
Uh, no, number, item three, page one, approval of preview of minutes. Look on a Sept- on a September minutes, it's.
Oh, oh.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So change it to weather, not like whether we're having it.
Weather. Alright.
So are we putting both of these in together?
Now, how about the November ones, are they?
I have one more typo.
Okay.
Members' absence, uh, I'm a Vic chair.
Where is this?
Under members' absent on page one.
Uh-huh.
It's Vic chairman.
Vic chair vice. He's an E.
Okay.
Sorry, I correct critique for a living.
No, Vic chair, Vic chair. I don't know, other one.
It's October, over here, yeah. Alright, then I'll go ahead and move to, um, accept these minutes for the October and November meetings, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor, let me know by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, alright, and then pass. Thanks, Annalise.
Thank you.
I think the November ones were something like eight pages.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, citizen comments for any items not on the agenda? Anyone wish to make any comments or speak to anything?
Mm.
Okay, and there not being any, we'll move on to sign permits.
Does anyone here, I don't, I don't see my, uh, contact for Dunkin' Donuts, does anyone here representing Dunkin' Donuts now, okay.
Anybody here partake in Dunkin' Donuts?
Um. Pardon me, what'd you say?
Said, does anybody partake in Dunkin' Donuts?
Whoa. Whoa.
Um.
Snow.
Chairman, um.
Got the whole revolving thing going here.
Uh, she has added some flair to the PowerPoint, we didn't have a lot of items, so she was gonna add some bling to the PowerPoint.
I have PowerPoint now, sorry.
Yeah, absolutely, okay.
Anyway, we're trying to keep it puppy, um, Mr. Chair, um, part, um, this agenda item to revisit the one wingboard sign was at
Right.
the applicant's or the, one of the owner operator's requests.
Does everyone on the commission remember the original discussion we had, okay?
Um, this board has heard staff talk about, um, the, the existing situation out there and their recommendation. Um, without the applicant here, do you wish to move forward, um, with the consideration or wait until such time that the applicants hear and can share their side of the, of, of wanting this request?
How do you feel about that?
So, if I can, I was the one who originally had the big issue with it last time. I don't mind moving forward on it, just so that we're not holding up the businesses. Uh, the only question I would have is which wing are they putting on? That's the only question I have.
I don't know if they're gonna put it to the left or the right, I would assume the left because it's.
Okay. So it faces forward?
Yeah, because it's right there when you're, I'm not trying to.
That's fine, I was just curious, it just didn't delineate, it just said one wing, so I was like, which one?
Yeah, I. Yeah, I don't know if.
That would probably make sense when it's.
Yeah, I would think the moose is.
I would think they went for the front face forward, but yeah, no, as, as far as I'm concerned, I mean.
So just to clarify, the, the permitted, um, specifications is seven by eight and a half?
It's compliant.
Um, that is what's suggested in our proposed sign code, um, that Councilman Strong is, uh, championing for, championing for us.
Okay.
Um, that, that is the maximum size, they do have an approved site plan right now, um, which states that the menu board, um, is to be seven by seven, which it is, um, this would be considered a, a site plan amendment and, um, if it is so approved by this body, um, staff would follow up with them to ensure that their site plan, um, page is amended to reflect the additional dimensions.
Well, that would give them some latitude to, uh, to change that piece as specials and so forth change, it still would stay within
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
the s- size specification that we were aiming for with the, with the sign orders, how do you feel about that?
I think we should go for it.
Are you comfortable with it?
I would, yep.
Yes.
Alright, then would anyone like to make the motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the Dunkin' Donuts drive-through menu board, uh, wing request with one wing, um, based on whatever site that they're gonna put it on.
We'll leave that to that.
I'll second.
Alright, motion has been made and seconded to approve the, um, Dunkin' Donuts, um, request to include, um, a wing in addition to the menu board. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, and it passes.
Very good.
Thank you.
So if you can let them know, thank you.
Yep.
I, they're gonna be elated, thank you so much.
Said, we didn't wanna hold them up till we went ahead.
No, I, I s- I, I appreciate that on behalf of them.
Good, good. Okay, Greg's Driving School?
Yes, everybody should, um, remember Greg's Driving School, um, they, I know, and Anne, you are just dazzling people.
Ooh, look at all that.
Wow. Next she's gonna do Zooms.
Um. When it's cold outside, you gotta get a little wet.
There you go, um, it's like the winter twinkle show that the mayor has on the billboard out there. Um, Greg's Driving School is, um, i- in, in the process of, um, moving from their current location on Ridge Side Drive and, um, they're going to be taking up space along East Ridgeville Boulevard. As such, um, they wish to, of course, um, move their signage and the, the logo and, and the coloration should look familiar to everybody.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so what they wish to do is, um, as Annalise is showing here, is to put, um, a, a panel sign on an existing roof mount,
Mm-hmm.
um, placard, um, equipment.
It's on the left? The bank teller, the big teller roof?
It's one of the little, yeah, the drive-throughs.
Yeah.
Right.
So, they're, um, it, it's not a, a cabinet box or a, a box lit, um, cabinet sign, it's just simply a panel and it's gonna be illuminated by an existing spotlight.
Right. But it's the, it's the design and style of the previous sign.
Of, of the previous, yeah, it, it's not of the, um, of the original.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think their intent is to repurpose the, the panels that they received approval for not so long ago.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, they also wish to install, Annalise, do you have the picture?
I don't think I do.
Oh, okay, and I think it was in the pa- in your packages, um, they wish to, um, place a panel, um, where the physical therapy is.
They're changing it.
The monument sign.
The body that's on it. Yep, there it is.
Yep.
Um, along the monument sign.
Yeah.
And it would just be a direct replacement of an existing panel, um, it wouldn't be increasing the size of the monument. So, they have requested approval, um, for both of those signs.
Is that monument, Heather, double-sided?
Um, that monument.
I don't, I don't think it is.
I don't, you know what?
Uh, okay.
I don't think it is, I think it will.
Yeah, because when it's a direct replacement.
It's such a dark color.
No, no, I just didn't know if there's a sign on each side, that's what I was asking.
I don't know, I don't know.
Okay.
I can look, we can check it out tomorrow, I don't think there is.
Yeah, it, it doesn't, uh, typically they are, but it, it doesn't affect the, the signage.
Yeah.
Typically, they have what's on, what's on the front is on the back.
So, is the sign that's on the roof currently the lease sign? Is that the same size as what they're putting up or is that, is it the, looks like the billboard attachment that's behind it?
Yeah, I.
I mean, that picture up there doesn't show it real well, but the printed-out one that we have in our packets shows it a little better.
Yeah, the printed-out one is not the best, um, attempted superimposing the proposed sign. Um, the proposed sign is eight, eight feet by three feet, um, and that is comparable to the physical therapy sign that was there.
It's approximately the same square footage?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just didn't know if they'd have to do any changes to reinforce the sign.
Did you want to do a Thursday night meeting, remember?
I did, but I can share mine with you if you'd like.
Alright. Do you want to recall where the monument sign is located, Fox?
Yeah, it's when, when you're at, when you're driving up and, and the, the, um, the site's a bit peculiar, but it's, it's on the, the right-hand side of the entrance.
Yeah, you're pa- it's past the Burger King and you go.
Yeah, and then you.
Yeah.
If you can picture doing that.
Yes.
Is the monument sign down on the, the Five Guys end or is it down, well, is it down on the Greg?
It's, it's down on the Greg's Driving School end.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Alright, okay, any other questions for Heather on, on this sign? Anyone care to make a motion?
The only, the only other question I have, and I know they wanna reuse signs, but I'm just curious. I see in a lot of the images here, Long and Foster Building, the mattress and the Five Guys, it's all block letters. But this is the only sign that's going to be a billboard.
Uh, the, let's not say billboard, can we clarify panel sign?
I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm.
Panel sign.
Panel sign, um, rectangular sign.
We'll use a different term. Three foot by eight foot square.
Yes, square or rectangle, um, a panel, that's, um, a- and, and that is a good point, Scott.
Initially?
Um, I, I think that their, their attempt is to repurpose, um, what they have.
No, no, I like, I like the green thing, I was just pointing it out to the body is that it's only one sign that'll be a panel sign, whereas the rest are all block lettering.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And where it is to the location, it's on the category of that, right, it's not like right in front, so.
It's off on the side. No, which doesn't, doesn't seem intrusive.
It's restricted viewing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, our.
We, we put them through quite a bit.
Yeah, considering it's the second time they bought a sign.
And, you know, the, if the planning commission would wanna attach to intermotion that they made, um, if they update their signage to perhaps,
We did not tell them to move.
I agree.
Or, or do the first one without coverage.
I agree.
you know, mirror it to the channel lettering, you know, that's an option, but, but we were definitely, um, uh, thinking of, of what they've.
Yeah, I don't.
Okay. Alright, then I'll, um, I'll make the motion to, uh, to approve, um, Greg's Driving School sign permit application for both the roof mounted signage and the monument, um, panel changeout with the design and building materials that are proposed, uh, for the signs, is there a second?
I'll second, unless somebody else wants to.
Oh.
Okay.
I'll second.
Alright, seconded by Lindy, all those in favor, let me know by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, like sign? And with you now, it's, good.
Thank you.
Okay.
And we're very happy that they're able to, uh, stay within town as they're moving their business, so, we're, we're very happy to hear that they'll still be in our limits.
Now we can see we'll go in that space next time.
Okay.
Okay, um, not certain if anyone's heard, um, but Rita's, um, Italian Ice is planning on coming to town. Um, so, they are proposing to, um, take the, the, um, former tenant's space of Ellis Cleaners, so we're absolutely sorry to, to lose Ellis Cleaners, but we are happy to welcome Rita's. Um, and right now, we're just reviewing their signage, um, it's a little hard to see, I don't know if it was any clearer in your packages, but Ellis Cleaners used a, um, sort of a, a panel sign underneath the awning, it was a rather narrow, narrow panel sign. And, um, they, uh, okay, and, um, they're, they're not gonna keep that, they're gonna remove that, instead, they wanted to put, um, they, they're proposing to put, um, a roof mounted, um, sign for the Rita's Ice Cup, Ice Custard Happiness, and of course, with the, the Rita's cup. Um, it, it does, um, match the linear square footage, they have thirty-three linear feet of frontage and the proposed signage, um, blocked off, we didn't count, um, the individual ornaments, if you will, um, so the square footage is thirty-three square feet as well. Um, I, Annalise, when.
So, when, when you take the exterior dimensions, when you do the, the rectangle, you box it?
Box it.
Mm-hmm, thirty-three square feet, yeah, so, just wanna let you know that we are, um, practicing that. And Anne, you, you went around and took some photos of some existing roof mountains?
I did not get them on the slide.
Oh, okay, my heart's broken, but we did, um.
Well, basically Five Guys and, and Mount Airy Mattress.
Right, and, and it's, it's.
Although it's logos, but it's, and.
Yeah, um, also Long and, was it, they're Long and Foster across the street, um, there was actually quite a few of them, Starbucks, um, has the letters,
Foster.
Oh, okay.
um, down on the, the awning, um, we wanna be cognizant that we're, we're not allowing, you know, roof projected signs, but in some of the older building design, it's really, really hard to put signage between the, the overhang and the beginning of the windows. So, and, and this is one of those, um, those scenarios here.
Okay, okay. Okay.
Yes.
So, question, there's two slides here, one shows Rita with the custard cup and the whole thing custard, but then there's the second one that ends up saying, open all your room.
Mm-hmm. That is not.
Okay.
No, um, because that did push them over.
Oh, okay.
Um, so, and, so that was the original, um, rendering that they sent us, and then, um, they,
That comes out. The second one.
they didn't count that in their square footage, and then we advised them that that would be counted, so they will be taking that out.
Okay. Right. Okay.
Okay.
So the planning commission's consideration would be, um, simply for the channel lettering design, um, measuring thirty-three square feet.
And I think all the Rita's, you know, the text isn't truly the block letter style, I mean, the point to note, A, the sign fits, B, that is their text, that is their logo.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, I don't see anything wrong with it.
Mm-hmm.
It's aesthetically pleasing.
Alright. Anyone wish to make the motion?
I'll make a motion, now, we re- do we recommend approval of the sign permit application with the design and building material proposed?
Second. Of, and can I make a modification of the color one proposed?
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, motion has been made by Lindy and seconded by Scott, uh, to approve Rita's sign permit application with the design, building material and color as proposed, all those in favor, let me know by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, like sign? With you now.
Thank you.
Okay. And, let's see, we're able to drop out the real estate team sign, they're no longer.
Right, we did receive an email, um, from the building representatives today that they were no longer pursuing that signage, so, that's why it was removed from the agenda.
Pursuing that. Okay, alright, then that'll take us into hearing from our county planners, Andrea?
She's here.
Yes, yes.
Welcome.
Happy New Year.
Huh?
Happy New Year.
Oh, Happy New Year, seems like I haven't seen you guys for quite some time, so, um, just a couple of things to remind you of and just give you an update on. Um, we formally submitted our water and sewer master plan for the county to the state on January seventh, which means that, I was telling, kind of joking with Heather earlier today, that, uh, we will hear back from them hopefully by the end of March, giving themselves their second ninety-day extension, they get the ninety-day extension and then, or ninety days and then an additional extension, so, that's normally how they do it, they wait till the last minute to send us the, uh, extension, so, that's what we're expecting. Um, also, our master plan will be finished, um, the draft of our ma- of our county master plan will be finished, um, quite shortly, we're just working, there are few chapters that are left and, but I think they said that ninety, eighty-five, ninety percent of the document is complete. And that's all? Anybody have any questions?
Okay. No?
Alright, thank you.
Great to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, great.
Dear Andrea.
Let's see, Frederick County.
Okay, we don't have.
Mr. Chairman, Tim Goodfellow, um, did reach out to me and, um, he was not able to, um, make this evening's meeting, um, but he will be here February to give us an update, um, just to let you know that, um, the staff is working with him, um, with regard to the Frederick County development, um, and I'm gonna keep on the agenda, if it's okay with you, the, that rescheduled date of those public hearings, um, so we remember to continue to ask for that, and those are the, um, the, of the latest development, the, the, the series of, uh, the, the public hearings for the.
We, we really appreciate the, um, we appreciate the relationship we have with, with the planning staff in both counties.
Frederick County. Well, yeah.
With how volatile and all that's going on, especially right now in Frederick County, it's, the, the quality of the dialogue we have with Tim and the interchange and sharing is, is very, very important. So, do let him know that we appreciate that and the updates that he'll be providing us, the insight, because there is a fair amount of concern.
Right, and, you know, something interesting, and, and just looking, you know, at, at the Frederick County processes, um, you know, the processes, you know, have the,
you know, with the. Going on there.
I guess the same flavor, but they all have their intricacies, um, so one thing that I'll be, um, speaking with him about Wednesday is, um, the details of their APFO, um, and, and how it functioned in, in this, um, you know, in, in the Frederick County government specifically with Monrovia.
Mm-hmm, mhm.
Um, you know, how, it, was it, uh, you know, were, were there, was their APFO changed, modified, relaxed, um, waived? Um, was there, you know, some sort of fee and low structure, just, just to understand better, um, the, the approvals that were attached, so.
And, and as we're coming down, you know, to the end of the road on finalizing our own master plan draft, um, our consideration of our outer boundaries and what'll be our final recommendation, you know, for those zonings and so forth, we're, we're taking, uh, him at his word to say, when we finalize that, we propose that to Frederick County and they'll respond.
Right, and, and I do wholeheartedly believe that, um, that the planning staff, um, they, they have gotten approval from, from when you and I went before them, um, with the draft, um, they will definitely initiate that community plan update, whether or not the, their planning, the Frederick County Planning Commission will, um, make those amendments, you know, remains to be seen, so.
Okay. Relationship's important.
Absolutely.
Great, okay, then we can move into unfinished business. And the first of those is ordinance two thousand fourteen dash two.
Yes, and, and this is, um, this should look very familiar, this was brought to you in November, um, it wasn't in ordinance form though.
It's like, yeah.
Um, this was supported by the, the planning commission at that time to forward to, um, the town council, and it did carry a favorable recommendation. Um, just formality-wise, we do have to attach an ordinance number with that, and, um, the planning commission recommendation back to town council before they schedule their public hearing. Um, so that's why it's on the agenda this evening in ordinance form.
Okay. Okay.
Heather, I have, uh, one question.
Yes, ma'am.
I was looking, and I wa- actually wasn't here in November, which is why I don't recognize it, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, the only thing I w- I can't tell from the, this is, this is still downtown zone, right? Up Center Street?
Right.
This is downtown, right, right, so.
Yeah, and it's, yeah.
Otherwise, it wouldn't be allowed in downtown.
Yeah, so the thing I, I wasn't clear on when I reviewed the downtown zone ordinance is, in, um, in B one, it says retail and personal service establishments have a maximum up to fifteen thousand square feet, but I wasn't sure if that applied to the other parts. I, I guess basically, I can't tell if there's a, a size limit.
Yeah. No, that. No, there, there is no size limit proposed with this, that fifteen thousand square feet, um, would just be for the retail and, and service establishments.
Okay. 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 Okay, so we don't know what, I mean, there wouldn't be a limit unless it was just through the process.
Right, um, some, some things, um, that would, um, curtail, um, the, the size limit perhaps, uh, would be parking, because, um, all other development provisions for the downtown zone would apply, um, parking would be required, um, and it, so that, so that's probably your, your biggest factor,
Right, right.
um, limiting size factor, um, as is any setbacks that would, um, possibly, depending on the location.
Wasn't the whole point of the Center Street development to be boutique shops and, you know, places to, people to walk to and shop and, you know, sip and stroll kind of thing versus massive gyms where you drive your car and.
I guess that's what I was thinking about the size, I mean, even the medical lab places there, it's all nice and, you know, pretty, I see it from my kitchen window every night.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, exactly, well, I was thinking of you when I was, I see it every night.
So I think. I think part of this too is the fact that we thought, I mean, I could be wrong, I thought this was with regards to a, um, gosh, now my mind's slipping, a, uh, community center, thank you, Councilman King, that that was part of the purpose of this, is a community center would fit into that. So, in part of the discussions that we've had, um, with bodies like, and, uh, one I can remember is YMCA or a different group coming in, not having a huge monstrosity of a gym, but working with something like that, they wanna have some type of small little component, it might be rehab thing for people to come in for the community center, or something that would happen with that. I think that was the purpose of what this was, and what they were trying to make it flexible enough so it wasn't so rigid, I think Councilman Average.
Yeah, and the, the other consideration that, that echoed what Scott's saying is, we've also gotta consider was economically viable, if, say for example, a community center went in, then that would be the draw for other things that we want, so, um, the, the economic viability is critical for this one. You know what we'd like, but what, what is somebody, what was somebody willing to make investment on, is they gonna return on it? And, y'all do have the purview, reviewers and income support anyway.
Right.
This just gives us another tool in our toolbox.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, the size was the only thing I was, I thought could be an issue, I wasn't so much concerned about the existence, but, so we, so we can't, um, that can't be put into it, the size. I mean, there's a size maximum for these other things, but what if it's a special exception, I guess we can.
I. I think my, my, uh, personal input on this is that if the property allows for the size of whatever that is when it comes in for the site plan, this body would look at that, so, I mean, I don't think we wanna be restrictive in nature to, you own a piece of property and it's, you know, fifty acres and sorry, you can only use a hundred square feet of.
I know, but we're being restrictive here, for retail.
For retail space.
B one, yeah, we're already being restrictive, so, I'm not sure it's right here.
Yeah. No, no, I understand.
Yeah.
I, I was on the original commission that did the, we came up with the downtown, so the reason for the restriction on retail was, if they thought.
Right.
Right.
But, um, as, as Councilman Strong agreed, um, I would encourage you not to put limit size of this, because you'll get to it anyway.
We're gonna have latitude in the review.
Right, latitude, but i- it, as a development tool, at this point, it's really, you know, intended, it's a community center and economic.
Cause we're looking for magnets to bring people to downtown.
And I mean, it could be, if it's a community center, and say it's a gym floor, and that's the space, I mean, you're talking fifty by a hundred square feet? Or, you know, whatever, to put in there for a gym, I don't know how big a floor is, or a seating for a theater or shows or whatever, that would limit the whole thing if we did that.
Generated some discussion.
That was good.
Hmm.
Really great, was it great points to.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, other questions, other comments? Okay, are you ready to make a recommendation on this to, for it to go to council?
I'll abstain because you guys are gonna send it to me.
Well, how does that really feel? Yeah, I think we're in agreement.
Okay.
You want me to make the motion?
Absolutely, make the recommendation.
Okay, yes, here we go, um I make the uh motion to approve. The or recommend the ordinance number two oh one four dash two, which would um permit fitness studio clubs or gyms along Center Street as an ex- a special exception use.
Is there a second to the motion?
A second.
Okay, twenty seconds. Okay, Patty's motion, uh if there's no further discussion, all those in favor let me know by saying aye to the motion. Aye, all those opposed, like sign?
Aye, I oppose.
Okay.
And I'm abstaining.
One abstain, one aye, okay, and it passes, all right? Then we'll send that to the council.
Thank you.
And hope that there's someone who maybe gets passed quickly and someone comes back with possibilities. All right, signed ordinance redraft, an update.
Yes, so thank you, the uh signed ordinance redraft and the update for this body uh and the public is that the signed uh ordinance was redrafted into an actual ordinance form at the request of the council. Uh the last council meeting, so it will be formally introduced to the council for discussion uh at the next council meeting in February. And we will discuss it for the March timeframe and hopefully have a vote on that. Um as I stated prior and I'll restate again for everybody's benefit, this ordinance only entails what staff felt was necessary. Uh for them to be able to do their jobs and work with uh the businesses coming in to help define sign criteria. That criteria was outlined within the signed ordinance draft that we had created, uh was sent to this body and it's just the red text that was in here. That was also sent out to the public to look at, I believe, at some point, Heather, when when we had multiple discussions on this.
This has been, yeah, the 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 document in its entirety has been distributed.
Since like forever, yeah, so.
Forever to understand.
The. Yeah, so the very large document was shrunk down to what the essentials were that's critical for staff to do their job, and so that will is what will be presented forward.
Okay.
Great. Great.
And I would just add that it's thanks largely to to Scott and to Heather, uh who did the 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 majority of the heavy lifting on this. They basically stripped this back to about a third of the original size.
Thank goodness.
Um the other point that's well taken, at a time when we're trying to launch the economic revitalization, especially downtown. We're trying to show greater support for our local business community, it's absolutely critical. That our town staff who work with signed ordinances and and those kinds of realities on a day in, day out basis have something that's consistent.
Consistency, yeah.
Have something that spells it out.
Hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, actually makes it very clear for the businesses as well, it's not something with lots of.
And subjectivity.
Yes.
Yes, it's it's not subjective, it is very.
Mm-hmm.
Cut and dry and it helps staff to bring things to this body that have already been vetted and approved and there shouldn't be any hiccups, it should just be, we look at it, yep, meets all the criteria, sounds good, let's go.
Well, just see, having a re- streamline will make it so much easier for business owner, I know if I was new business owner and I came in, you gave me something, ordinance is big, I'd start wondering why I came there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
We would also ask, um has a copy of the the uh reduced verbiage and so forth, has it been shared with the Economic Development Commission?
Yes, it has, uh they ended up having some comments to it as well and those comments were incorporated, uh Bill's not in the audience, does he know?
Okay, good.
Um but yeah, EDC has ended up looking at it as well.
Okay, good. Good. All right. All right, very good, very good. So this will go to council, in which meeting, in March?
February.
February.
The the.
Next week.
The next week, the February council meeting, it is on the agenda to be introduced.
Okay.
Um and so there's new policy, process that has to happen for things to be introduced, where one has to introduce it and we actually vote on the introduction of a thing. And if it doesn't get enough votes, then it's not introduced.
All right, great.
So it'll come back, Scott?
Mm-mm.
Okay.
It actually goes to council, it's already been through both EDC and planning, so they've already seen it, they've already commented on.
Okay. So the introduction.
It goes to council and they can make a decision or edits or whatever.
Okay, so um they would, would they be setting?
Unless council makes a vote and says they wanna send it down.
No. No, what, um.
If the introduction's set, you're ready to be voted on in March.
Yep.
So the public.
So there would have to be a public hearing.
Right, so the public hearing would be set?
I would set it right after the February meeting.
The third. Okay, that's, I just wanted to put that in mind.
Yep.
Yeah, let's.
Yeah, based on the introduction, we'll work that with Debbie for what the available dates are and she's gotta do the advertising and all that.
Okay. Right, that's, I just wanna.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I don't have to worry about putting it on the Planning Commission's agenda for February, okay.
No.
All right, so let's move into new business.
Called relief.
And the first order is. A resolution that follows up on the. The hearing that we had prior to our meeting tonight.
Right, and um the this resolution um is is basically just guided by uh the water allocation ordinance. Um that was passed in October and um again, took effect this month. Um there are a a series of milestones, if you will, and um the Planning Commission's milestone for January was to um have a public hearing. And delineate that priority area um for the priority area category. Um so this resolution, um the exhibit B um would would be the the map outline. But um sometimes maps can be hard to differentiate if one um property is in the boundary or not. Um so staff has compiled a list of the, all of the parcel numbers that were included.
Okay.
In the priority area as well as the tax account numbers, um so if there's any question, somebody would just refer to this resolution.
We expect, correct.
Um so uh this, um the the Planning Commission has the authority to make their own resolutions, um and um. Like you can. Talk about it now, I don't know, I'm just, whatever you guys wanna do.
Didn't we already talk about it?
Well.
Well, we entertain comments from.
Right, I think the majority, in my opinion, there wasn't really any comments that came in that necessitated, right, a change.
Well, it was clarification.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Um and I think this body's talked about it at an audio.
Well, we talked about it when we made our priorities, it doesn't go to the priorities.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, it's just, it's another follow through on the the whole track that we're on.
Right.
Yeah.
It's just a, yeah, another step forward with it. Um so is there ability for us to to make a motion to.
Mm-hmm.
Accept and to uh recommend the the resolution to council?
Yeah, would. No, because this is your resolution that you approve, you don't recommend anything, you approve this.
No. It's our business. You mean, we get to stamp this ourselves?
Yes, you do, this is.
I know.
This is your, it's a Planning Commission's resolution and you would make a a motion to approve it, um if you so choose, and then we take a vote.
This is.
Fabulous. Right. Okay, then I'd like to make the motion that we approve Planning Commission Resolution number two thousand fourteen dash one. Okay, as proposed, okay, seconded by Leslie.
Okay.
There's no further discussion, all those in favor let me know by saying aye, aye, all opposed, like sign?
Aye. Um the, um we we had some discussion earlier at the public hearing that um at the February third meeting, um the town engineer would um be bringing forth. Uh a report, um and somebody jump in if I'm reiterating this wrong, um and they would designate um the available yield, um water capacity yield. That report will be coming to this body in February, um that is when your discussion should should start as to the percentages. Um that you wish to allocate to the different categories, priority areas being one of them, of course.
Mm-hmm.
Um you you are required to forward back a recommendation at your March meeting.
Okay.
So, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, so is that, the town engineer gonna work that out with the water commission prior to bringing it to this body?
No, the, at the town council meeting, the the council's going to. For lack of a better word, um bless the town engineer's report and they're actually gonna set, the the town council will release that capacity yield. And forward that that report, the that the town engineer presents to you to the Planning Commission. You guys should be getting that very soon. Okay.
Then let's go ahead and make that an item on the our February agenda and I was.
The February discussions.
And I was looking at the ordinance language today and I encouraged everyone to go back and look at the categories again and so forth. And that'll line up nicely with the the last couple of work sessions and and the next one that we'll schedule and hopefully as we uh complete our deliberations on recommendations. All right, cool. Two thousand fourteen Planning Commission Work Plan, does everyone have a copy of basically the email I sent out to you? As Heather and I have been talking about what remains for us to to do, uh and the most efficient way to do it with regard to finishing up the master plan. There there's always been this desire to put that to bed and then be able to move on to implementing it. And working with the commissions and the council for that purpose, okay? So I thought that I would would suggest that we consider, so what's the scope of work? Or what's the priorities that that come to mind, that we wanna be sure that we prioritize and that we allocate. Planning time and agenda time to and so forth the rest of the year. So what I sent out to you was just a handful of possibilities, okay? And it was to be a a starter piece, to ask you to also, you know, look through our draft, think about um what you think is in that first tier. And then come back with any other suggestions and uh let's discuss them and decide as a group, you know, what that work plan's gonna look like. My suggestion was, if possible, you know, during the month of February, but as expeditiously as we can get to it. Assuming that it'll line up more or less with how we're finishing up with the plan. Okay. Any feedback, questions?
Do you just want us to tell it to you?
Any thoughts? Hmm?
Do you just want us to tell you which ones we wanna prioritize?
No, no, anything else you think needs to be on the list for consideration. Just so we're we're kind of challenging ourselves, we're we're identifying. Some priority topics.
And one thing I would I would add, you know, rather than quarterly meetings with the commission chairs, why can't we get all the commissions, I mean, granted, you know how many will show up, but, so all the commissions to meet quarterly.
Even better. That'd be great.
Um again, you never know, we know how many times we've reached out to other commissions, but if some, you know, so if anyone wanted, we said designated like the third Monday, you know, what.
Representation.
Yes.
Okay.
And then in in any of the commission, you know, commissions, commission members who had issues or or questions or whatever, it would be a open forum right there.
Good.
And it's always a learning forum, you know, too.
Better, yeah. It's even better. Yep.
And didn't Jennifer mention something about. Leslie, streets and roads, d- um or traffic.
Traffic study.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't see it on here, but that falls into streets and roads, so that's why I was gonna go say it.
That's a. Well, no, it's it's actually the um frame and initiate a highway twenty seven corridor study.
Okay.
Road study.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's um, that that's where the.
But that, would that be planning or would that be streets and roads?
No, that's planning.
Really?
Well, highway, yeah, given the significance of of highway twenty seven, that commercial corridor.
Yeah.
Of coordination and stability.
It's a bit of a trap, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be a hot button for us, but um and Ken is here. But uh it's also possible that just in terms of a a comprehensive traffic study for the entire community, that might be something that.
Which we don't have.
You know, your commission might wanna take a look at, I think it's mentioned in in the chapter, is a possibility. Mm-hmm.
And remember, I yours, I'm sorry, go ahead, Chris.
And I've already got a uh line item, I already added a line item to the next year budget for the quarters, but that's already in there, so I think we have a placeholder in for.
Right.
Twenty thirty K?
Yeah.
Well, so. It's in the next year budget.
It's, the placeholder, I, we got um this definitive answer back, it's thirty five.
That's.
Better on a zero.
Okay, good. Thirty five.
And then we put, um I'm suggesting thirty five for the the planning side of it, to complete the study.
Okay. So the placeholder thirty, but do we have any idea what it costs to complete, study thirty K costs?
Thirty, it. Twenty five was the the throwout estimate, but we have a. We have a this, a great indication that it's thirty five thousand.
Okay.
Heather, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
So under the, okay, so the the frame and initiated twen- the twenty seven quarter study, traffic study, would also, a long time ago, I remember, Da- Donna Deard Johnson brought up about the street, the roads in the town where you can't have two cars pa- park, a car park and then two cars pass each other.
Right, like the width, the the road width?
Yes, and that that was concern, you know, about emergency vehicles getting down these roads.
Um so would would that be more of a, like like a an inventory almost?
Just. Just. Yes, yes.
Um.
And she had brought, this is, again, this is years ago, but she'd brought this up.
I remember Wildwood Park was very concerning to her, you know, because of the emergency vehicles.
Exactly. Exactly.
It's it's something that Jimmy Litten mentions all the time, too, that trying to leave through these streets with a, with a fire truck.
Oh, I can't even get out of my driveway and I look and look out avenue, be with, you know, I've got, there's a car parked here and there's two, a car coming, I have to like.
Right. Right.
Go hide and that's a miata.
At what point do we have, uh people do that for certain reasons, slow people down, they told that, people do that so people have to slow down, you go real, people just speed.
They're not slowing down where I am.
Me either, that's what that logic is, and some people don't park that way, some people have to slow down.
Lyndy, with your um, with your thinking, um would it be of, like an inventory and analysis and perhaps streets and roads recommendations as to restrict parking on one side or?
Or sometimes.
Yeah, yeah, or just get, I guess first an inventory, cause maybe it's only just a couple streets.
Okay. Okay.
I think the town's traffic study would do that, if we do the assessment of the roads, we would know as part of that.
Okay.
But I guess that goes back to Heather, the uh read twenty seven assessment, um is that figure only for doing that highway? Or is that for doing all the roads within town?
The thirty five thousand is simply for twenty seven.
No, that's just.
Right, so that's why, so we probably need to figure out of adding a zero since we don't have a study.
Yeah. Well, then we'll, we won't let streets and roads put that in a budget item.
So it might be for consideration, we don't have a plan at all for any of the roads in town, we don't know what the loads are, what it's rated for.
Well, that, and that was the concern.
No, yeah, but that's what I'm saying, I think this, my personal opinion is this could needs to be expanded uh for us to determine that, because then we can start to see what type of.
Yeah.
It it's gonna impact types of businesses too that are gonna go into places, I mean, we don't wanna end up having something, if we get theoretically a a store, it's got a huge drawl, and all of a sudden, we've got a choke point in town that we gotta deal with, what are we gonna do?
Right, and that that's the importance of um, you know, pursuing that corridor study, uh be, because along the twenty seven, um i- if you look at our vacant land inventory, um the predominantly, a lot of the um.
Parking, um.
Commercial inventory of land is either on the west or the east side of twenty seven. Um and and we really need to do our due diligence, you know, soon to determine the impact of of that development and and the best, you know, means for development and road infrastructure.
Wouldn't that be two separate studies though, cause the state would actually be participating in the twenties, route twenty seven corridor one, where they would not participate in the the city.
I don't know if the state's gonna afford up the funds for twenty seven to do that study, they might, but what we're talking about is also not just twenty seven when you look at it, we have the issue with uh Twin Ridge. Um where we've talked about, um.
Mm-hmm.
Sure, hold on.
Twin Arch, right?
Twin Arch, sorry, not Twin Ridge, where we've talked about the impact of traffic on there and Century Drive and, um.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm, Tony knows that one well.
You know, that that doesn't fall within the purview of the state looking at twenty seven.
Right.
They looked at the light and said, okay, this is what it is, but we're looking at the impacts of adding all sorts of businesses or expanding development.
In in that same breadth, is, I I know the town doesn't build roads, but is there any way we can try to find ways to open up Center Street?
Well, we've, we've been discussing.
Oh, what are you saying, no?
We've been discussing economic wise of opportunities to do that. We've been discussing economic wise of opportunities to do that, I know that if Larry was here, he would talk about, you know, some discussions that have happened with, uh, the owners for Center Street and, you know, dealing with land and community centers, and there's been a lot of things just floating, nothing has solidified.
Yeah, I think that would just help downtown zones, but if that street wasn't open.
Oh, yeah, that'd be great.
But I, I think also, it, it, what it all comes down to is, you make it available, it'll come, so right now it's kind of not perceived as available. You know, we don't have that property, so until that happens, we're not gonna have a path through to, for Center Street.
The, the twenty seven corridor study, the, the town's currently in negotiation, the, the county of Harrison Lejeure, um, of course, let's assume for a moment, and both sides are negotiating, you pay the county if they would like to have this happen, you know, there's benefits for the town, but ultimately, if, if the town does reach an agreement with the county, it's up to the citizens of the town to determine whether or not we do annex. The key question on that is, what's the traffic look like on twenty seven, what's it gonna do to twenty seven, so the twenty seven corridor study really is only, we're planning to attach to Rash, to answer Rash, to answer the expected questions on Harrison Lejeure, which are in the document. I mean, it's difficult for the council to make a decision without knowing the impact, and the community as well.
So.
Well. That, that would be one piece of it, it, it's almost like peeling the onion, because there are several components, um, you know, that y- we would anticipate could, will ramp up on its own, that volume over time, even if we had no additional, you know, development along twenty seven, it's going to increase.
Yeah, especially if you change some of the zoning to other things, like commercial, um, but with that said, um,
Right.
my, my concern with the twenty seven in Harrison Lejeure is that, um, we're looking at that property, so what is the timeline to do this traffic study? And is that before Harrison Lejeure and annexation discussions, I mean, something needs to be done for planning purposes, for budgeting purposes, and I'm just throwing it out there.
It would be, it would be preferable.
You have to, I mean, you want your bottom rainfall.
That you would wanna have the traffic before a decision, i- I would, before a decision was made on Harrison Lejeure.
Yes, right, yes.
Yes, totally, yes.
Yesterday.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, the reason why I just, I should move quickly into the budget, drop those placeholder into next year's budget, is exactly that, but this has to be done before the, before.
Yeah.
Before we can put the.
It has to, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause you can't, how can you make a decision on something when you don't have any information?
But that budget starts in July.
Some people will do that, and then go, where do we get the money?
Yes.
No. Yeah.
And, and you're, that, that, whatever happens at twenty seven is gonna impact every person that lives in this town, without a doubt.
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
So, the corridor study is more of a, a planning document, um, to, to get back the, to I think the, the independent study,
It already is.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
The, the twenty seven is, is a, a planning, um, planning document, because we're, we're planning raw land and vacant land, any other traffic studies to determine, um, current, you know, hiccups in already planned areas would likely be a streets and roads function.
Yeah, that'd be in several.
Right, so, um, but our, our main focus is to understand, um, eh, to, to understand before things develop, you know, what, what the best plan is, um, comprehensively, not just, not, not looking at a, a traffic study as each site develops. Um, we, we can't do that along that corridor.
That, that was the intent, so we would have a frame, we'd have a, a greater understanding.
And thank you, Councilman Evert, for making it easier for that to be discussed at the council level.
Well, and also because certain councilors save a serious amount of money, um, recycling, like, there's extra money.
I told you I'd find a way to spend it. Can you get any more, can you save any more?
We're looking at.
Or if we just talked about it, I'll go X.
Okay.
So, Ken, planning and zoning would en- encourage streets and roads to aggressively pursue a comprehensive study.
Just stop to think about, I mean, are we doing a study for the state then? For the state highway, are we doing a study for the state?
So, we're gonna, we're going to approach them to, to work with us.
And, and realistically, it's, it's a state highway, and this is town, you know, the state can tell the state that they're gonna do this, I mean,
Yeah, it's probably.
That's the point, is that if you do a study, say, if you need, are you looking to the state to say, you have to do this here?
Ken, I, 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 I would think the state's response would be, it's the actions that the town takes, it's the actions that the town takes is gonna affect the volume of traffic in twenty seven.
Mm-hmm.
They're not doing it.
Yeah, so you pay for it.
And, and the state will also probably say, hey, look, um, we're giving you H U R, highway user revenue, so the state gives us a certain percentage of money, for Iowa for freezing from, for the purpose, so, yeah.
Deal with their problems.
I don't wanna speak out of turn, I just, I happened to talk to the administrator for the State Highway Administration, um, a couple weeks ago, and she put me in touch with the, um, engineer who would oversee all of this, and she said, it's a very complicated process, it would include working with the county, as well as with the state, um, and she said, you know, do you have money? I said, no, you are gonna pay for it, and we kinda joked around a little bit and everything, but I feel like I have a connection, and I was gonna call the guy, I just got back into town today, so I was gonna call the engineer and talk to him, so,
We encouraged her to do that.
I think that they're willing, I, I, I feel like I at least have a, a door open right now, so, um, hopefully it'll be more open, yeah, so. So, I, I think we need to make it happen soon, because I'm not sure how long till the administrator, so, so hopefully we can move this along, okay? No promises, so I just wanna see what we can do.
Alright.
Okay, deliver by next week, okay? Invite next week, have the whole plan done, right? The whole study.
So, great discussion, um, you know, continue to, to think about anything else that might come to mind, take a look at the draft, you know, and let's, you think there's another couple that will be on this list, and, and in February we'll come back to it, and we'll try to do some prioritization, don't forget some more.
Yeah, um, we, it's not February, but, um, we, we should really, um, put M X D, um, as, as a, a high priority,
Me too, me too.
um, when we were, you know, discussing with a lot of people.
'Cause you already got two people that wanna apply, um.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, and it, it would be really good, as, um, Bill, you know, indicated, to possibly do a subcommittee approach, um, with that, so.
Right, right.
Cool.
Yeah, we could multi-track that one.
Thank you, and, and I'm, I'm gonna get better at that, I'm sorry, it's the mixed, um, mixed use.
Mixed use development.
Spell out there, come on.
Oh, M X D, I thought you were saying M F C.
Oh, and, and I should probably speak more clearly, I'll work on that as well. I, you know, I don't even need a microphone, I'm so loud, but the M X D, I, I will be much better, I, I'm sorry, Councilman Evert.
Well, and, and Bill and Heather, I still have the stack from the O- Office Park Employment, my stack is still this big from the beginning when we started talking about that.
It's gonna get bigger.
So, I still have all that old material when we start talking years ago.
I think we just volunteered for that O P E ordinance.
She did, I heard.
Yeah, she did.
Mm-hmm.
Continuity.
I think, I think she did, shall we jot that down?
You should, is that, that, I've been looking at that thing for years, longer than the sign ordinance.
Absolutely, it's good, all in favor.
You wanna, keep that to use. Everyone, put that to use.
All in favor, absolutely, amen. Okay, reports and other business, Heather, give us an overview of next steps to, um, bring in this master plan out.
Alright, well, basically, um, the, the largest thing outstanding is the parking lot items, um, of the rezonings, you guys had a wonderful work session, um, this past Thursday, you got a lot done, um, you, you still need to nail down, um, or you need to nail down, reaffirm, or change your position on any of the draft rezonings.
Okay.
Um.
Something I, I'll mention to everyone in, in that regard, Heather passed out to us the detailed descriptions of each of the zoning districts, okay? It's very useful to refamiliarize, at least it was for me, to go back through there and put them side by side, how does limited commercial, how is it similar and different to community commercial, how are they different from neighborhood professional, that sort of thing, okay?
Yes, it is.
Probably, I think.
Those, okay.
Mm-hmm.
That's one piece to refamiliarize yourself with, the other is, and I'll send out, um, an email with the link, is the Maryland Department of Planning website, that's all things comprehensive plan, you know, town plan, and, uh, including the, the detail of the course we take, when, when we're new to Planning and Zoning Commission, it's a great refresher, uh, and in terms of challenging ourselves to say, alright, so what is the purpose, you know, of a property or of zoning or an annexation, and, uh, and, and some of the considerations it suggests that we go through, it, it will be useful for this next work session. So, you wanna do any projected timeframes, or are you a betting woman as to what, no?
You know what, I found that jinxed it, so, um.
Well, we've been making big progress.
But, but I'm wait, uh, no, I, the.
Want us to send you dates or give you?
We need to do work session dates, I mean, I, I would think that if, um, there's, i- if, if we wrap up final comments, um, during the month of February,
Work session dates.
um, and, uh, I can work on getting the, the final draft, final, final draft, maybe it's your March meeting, um, that's, I don't wanna say, I mean, I would say March, April.
So, it would probably make sense to try to do something in the first half of February, but the first week is next week, so what are folks' availability the week after that?
Second week of February?
The second week of February.
Let's look the office calendar, I have no clue.
Uh, the, the dates that I have, um, available for the room,
I'll have to, I.
We're planning Valentine's Day.
Yeah, you're sure.
Just sign.
Um, are February seventh, February fourteenth, which every.
Valentine's Day, no, no.
No.
All of you are, all of you are my sweethearts though, and I would love to spend.
No. Fuck up.
I think, um, nothing, chocolate and planning commission members, that's perfect, um, so, um, and then February nineteenth. So, um.
What days of the week are these?
Friday, Friday, and then Wednesday.
Yeah.
Friday?
Seventh is a Friday, the fourteenth is a Friday, and the nineteenth is a Wednesday.
Yeah, that's. Seventh and fourteenth is a Friday.
Oh, being on a Friday night, damn.
I have, I have a fever.
Oh.
I didn't pick the dates.
We could also do Saturday during the day as well, if you guys wanna.
Yeah, right.
Nah.
Start at midnight, I don't know, let's just throw anything out there, apparently.
We can do all, I, I, I know that we're bouncing.
Yeah, that would go over well.
Now, the nineteenth is, we have that second nomination.
That's the, that's the ending, that's not, it's the end.
Or, do we, is, is that the end of it?
Yeah, it goes from the tenth to the nineteenth.
So, you're talking about availability of this space?
Yeah.
What about the basement, or, or that's not taken now?
The, it, it's taken like right now, but I can check the basement, typically for these sessions though, I, I think the.
I know, right. It's too big, it's small, okay.
It's recovering.
Yeah, and for the overhead, and.
Okay. So, we need to do a little bit more due diligence to see if we can free up.
Well, it's the nineteenth.
I think so.
Well, I can do the nineteenth.
Mm-hmm.
Bill, how you feel about the nineteenth?
Let's see, that is the, that's the third.
That's a Wednesday.
It's Wednesday.
That's the third Wednesday, isn't it?
Correct.
Okay, that's about the only Wednesday I don't have, cool, that's the worst.
It's nominations. Is this the, is the ending, was that?
That, that is a, that is a night that the, I believe the nineteenth this year is the last nomination, so, so from seven thirty till whatever time.
Yeah, that's right.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's here.
It should be a short, it should be a short meeting, but.
Well, and I think also staff, and I could be wrong, but staff's here, they'll end up announcing all the people that have put their name in for running from the tenth to the nineteenth.
Yeah, we had to switch it to the holiday.
So, it's, it's, yeah, so it's a window for the last call, and then they're gonna announce, here's everybody who's running.
Well, I mean, if need, if need be, then we could wait till that was over, but, if this, we probably need to f- try to reserve a full session for this.
Uh, yeah, it might be, right, but E D C is gonna end up.
It could be like a discussion.
It could be, yeah.
Are they doing, I'm trying to remember, okay, so, i- the meeting is here still, so that's gonna be a conflict for E D C, they'll be downstairs.
That's March.
Yeah.
Um, the twentieth is, but that's a parks meeting, um, the seventeenth is President's Day, I mean, if.
But Thursday.
Parks and Rec, yeah.
Oh, that is. Just signed.
Well, I mean, but if, if, if people are available, I can always come in.
Hey, schools are closed on the eighteenth, it's professional day.
Okay, that's our dog, maybe, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm not coming here on a holiday, uh, they're few and far between that I have.
So, I'm trying it.
Apparently, I'm, I'm open for anything, so I.
I know, any.
Um, can you read upon that?
You're on Valentine's Day.
Uh, and, uh, for any date.
We are so close.
Thank you.
What's happening the eighteenth?
Come on, close.
The eighteen.
We have a dog appeal.
It's the dog hearing, actually.
There's a dog appeal, we, you know, town hall is so busy, we need, we need additional meeting space.
So, there's, there's an appeal here, just.
We definitely do need additional meeting space.
So, so Judy asked the question, on the eighteenth is the dog appeal hearing, there was a, um, a incident with a dog that, per the code, it could be handed down to the council to make a decision on, for against the applicant and the defendant, based on any animal, and what to do.
Uh.
So, it kinda got bumped down from the county to us.
Dog court.
They didn't, they didn't wanna deal with it, so they handed it to us to make the decision.
Dog court.
Dog to be, but then you have to.
Oh, so you have to.
That's what I wanna do.
For the hearing, therefore.
I should, I should, I should say that.
You, you, yeah, in my, in my, I mean, we're there, we're there.
Heather's here.
No problem.
Oh, yeah, you're.
I've got a couple of lunchware, yes.
Well.
And you can't do the nineteenth, Bill, did you say you couldn't do that?
I can do that.
Well, I do, um, a lot of, considering.
Well, then why are we talking?
'Cause the, the, because, the room's not available.
Yeah.
No, it is!
It's a nomination, I appreciate it.
It's a nomination. It's a nomination.
You have to get the nomination meeting on the way.
I'm on a, um.
We're gonna have to have a joint meeting or something.
I'm on a list service of attorneys, and it comes up a lot, and, cause, I could get, get your furrow, somebody nearby.
Yes.
Right.
I just wanna, I'm just depending on, just do it or don't.
Okay, Heather, the twenty.
Parks and Recs.
Okay.
I need to, I need to get some advice.
Yeah. We, we could talk to Andrew, you guys like to meet offsite.
What about the thirteenth?
What about the thirteenth? No?
Could pencil that in.
The thirteenth, what day of the week?
It's a Thursday.
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 Perfect, no, no.
No.
Yeah, our date, our, our, our date is the nineteenth at this point.
You can ask for, I think it can assist for that.
Okay.
Okay, nineteenth, at seven?
And.
Well, no, it could, whenever the nominations are finished.
That's, 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 that's.
Um, we could, we could go downstairs, we could start downstairs.
That, that, I'm one of the upstairs contestants.
A mobile meeting.
Is it just going on?
Huh?
A mobile meeting, it's just.
And, yeah, we, we can start it downstairs.
One. My.
I guess it. Okay.
And that was a citation.
Okay.
So, I need to talk to somebody about it.
Yeah, he's great.
Alright, so tendently, let's say the nineteenth.
It's seven o'clock?
Be more details to follow.
About it, do we have a date?
You're gonna be where?
We're saying, we're trying for the nineteenth.
We're gonna try for the nineteenth.
Where are you gonna do it?
Well, we may need to start downstairs and come up here after.
Cause there'll be E D C too.
Um.
Yeah.
Is on the nineteenth.
A big party.
We'll, we'll have that commission meeting that Lydia was talking about.
Alright, but I'm gonna talk to Dr. Andrew.
I'm fine with that.
We'll work it out.
Because.
I'm sure he can move it.
Well, I don't, I mean, everything's important, but.
Why don't we just meet upstairs?
Upstairs where?
No, no, no.
On the couch?
Yeah, you guys got a huge time to play, we'll, we'll deal with it later, I don't wanna keep.
Alright, we got it.
Yeah, we'll make it happen.
Zoning Administrator Report?
Um.
Can we have one?
I have Heather, I didn't go.
Annalise, they all in verbal, they can't. Absolutely not, Annalise was inundated today, and, um, we, we tried to give you the.
We'll, we'll postpone that till, till next month.
The report will be forthcoming.
We'll postpone it to next month.
It'll be forthcoming, she had absolutely not a spare minute.
Alright, anybody have anything else?
So, do you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Blow this popcorn stand.